This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Members of the community, school board, we are calling this meeting to order on August 10th of the Brighton School Board. I'm still new at this, so as I make mistakes, I'll ask people to correct me and we'll keep it moving along. A little different order this morning because we'll start with a couple of public hearings as required by New York State law. But even before we do that, I would like to introduce Lila Munger, our new student representative, over to my left. Welcome to her. The first is the public hearing with regards to the district-wide safety plan and Lou Lima will be presenting that.
Good morning. This is just a brief overview of the public safety plan, which is a requirement of the SAVE legislation. So as we see here, generally a standard format. This is one component of the SAVE legislation and we have our principals' building-level response plans. Code of Conduct is also on the agenda today. Uniform violeness in reporting, construction and civilities, citizenship, character education, and school violence prevention training, a lot of which falls under Dr. Rido's department. So the guiding principles of the state template. The plan should be comprehensive encompassing activities from early prevention through crisis. And that's where you'll see a lot of the updates today is going to be on the early prevention and specifically, we're going to focus on mental health and social-emotional learning that has been ongoing work within the district. Plan should be widely disseminated within the community to foster broad acceptance and participation. This is the public hearing that meets that requirement, but it's also being discreetly presented on our website and sent to our district safety committee for further comment. Plan should clearly define roles and responsibilities, so the district-wide safety plan does, but then also our building-level safety plans further define the roles and responsibilities for under our incident command system. And the plans could be continually reviewed and updated to remain current. And you'll see evidence of that just from our blueprint planning and from our leadership retreat, we incorporated some of the social-emotional learning aspects of it. So the format of the district-wide safety plan, again, it's more of a template. We talk about the risk reduction, prevention, and intervention strategies, the response, recovery, annual review, and the appendices that are listed in the table of contents. I'll briefly go through each section of that to give highlights of what's changed from last year's plan. The first of which, again, is creating safe environments. And that's an area that we added to the district-wide safety plan this year, again, based on the work in Mrs. Pagnola and Mrs. Peddick's office. We take credit for and emphasize in the plan the work in cultural competence, social-emotional learning, our second step program, learning for justice lessons, restorative practices, and then engaging families as partners in the learning process, all in that preventative, building that safe environment for our students and for our school community. And then the standard requirements are the training requirements, the de-escalation training, the warning signals, a lot of which our counseling staff is specifically trained on and our administrative staff is. And again, some of the other training that's pervasive throughout the district. And the other tactics, the recording tools, visitor management system, all the procedural aspects and I would say internal controls related to school safety that are consistent in our school environment. So the reporting tools, what we're pleased to be introducing, we're not quite ready with it yet, but we're going to be introducing a new, it's called Live Safe Mobile App. And it's the complement and supplement our Safe Schools Help Line whereby we'll have an app where somebody could report something or could start chatting with, you know, with an administrator or do something. If they're seeing something, they need to say something or if they need to be reminded of a rule, they have access to our policies, procedures. But we're excited to be rolling it out. We're still in the development phase of it, customizing it to Brighton and how we do business. But look for that in early fall type training. And again, the Safe Schools Help Line is an important piece that provides the 24-hour reporting. So if it'd be the middle of the night, we're going to maintain that reporting tool so someone could talk to that help line. Their concerns would be triage. Should it result or require first responder intervention, that customer service representative, the triager would be facilitating that. Then the superintendent, the director of security, myself, would get immediate notification of something that may be happening or a risk that could impact the next school day, for instance. So the response, preparation of supplies and tears, again, these are all templates generally that come down from the state police and are for our first responders across the nation. So we've adopted the recommendations in our district-wide safety plan. The notification activation of emergency response systems, you can see the drills that we practice on a regular basis, lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter in place. The principals administer that along with our director of security, John McCabe, and we document those drills and report those to the state as well. Deactivating the incident command system, again, that flows into our building-level response plans, but the district-wide safety plan provides an overarching framework for that. And as with that is the notification and partnership of first responders, town and county officials. Recovery is another section within the district-wide safety plan, and it talks about the roles and responsibilities of post-incident response. Again, those are more defined at the building level of response plans, but this provides just a high-level framework for it along with the action planning that's required. And the important appendices that are included in the district-wide safety plan, the safety committee representatives who can be contacted if there is a concern. All concerns may be presented to any of the safety committee members, and then it's brought to the larger committee. And we talk through that as a committee with a wide array of stakeholder groups. The building and contact information, emergency telephone numbers, emergency information forums, forums related to telephone threats, building risk determination and the hazards that are applicable to each of our buildings. French Road would have different external risks, for instance, than the high school would, for instance, just given the environment and the community around it. The incident command model is what we have adopted and the risk and productive factors from the CDC and prevention. So just in conclusion, Safe Schools, all hands on deck. It takes all of us to maintain the safety of our schools. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
I would just note two things, Lou. First, and I should have said this in the beginning, with regards to the public hearing for the district-wide safety plan and the Code of Conduct, this is just a review. It will be formally voted on in the fall. If members of the community have feedback either on what Lou just discussed or what Kevin will be discussing with regards to the Code of Conduct, they can provide that at any time prior to September or in public participation. Personally, I'll just say, Lou, I love the emphasis on mental health. It's getting a lot of press lately, and it's great to see that we're taking that very seriously. We understand we've asked students to go and teachers and everybody to go through a lot in the last 18 months, and we're not through it yet. So I think the focus on mental health is great. I'll now ask Dr. McGowan to run through the public hearing with regards to Code of Conduct.
All right. Good morning. Welcome back into the room. It's great to see everybody in this space. Great sign of what's to come and a return to something all the different, something much more closer to what we are used to. As Mr. Davis had mentioned, this is the Code of Conduct hearing, which means we are simply presenting very briefly and very simply a proposed change to the Code of Conduct. This is required annually, not the change, but the fact that we have a hearing similar to the safety plan. And then if anybody has additional comments, they can certainly submit those through Kim Lanspan, kim underscore Lanspan at bcst.org. She loves as much email as you can possibly send her. But if anybody does have questions or counts for the board to consider, or of course, in public comment this evening or at the next board meeting before both the Code of Conduct and the safety plan are adopted in September. The one proposed change is to 28, page 28, the section that we currently have in our Code of Conduct regarding sexual harassment. And what we're really simply doing is expanding on what is currently language from the Code of Conduct to go further than what we previously have. And it's important to point out that this is based on changes in federal law that that impacted board policy. So Title IX is a federal law, of course, that prohibits discrimination against any person on the basis of sex in an education program or activity. And that is a federal regulation. So our policy and procedures relating to both sexual misconduct and sex discrimination include the requirements under Title IX of federal law and the New York State Digging for All Students Act and any of the other federal or state laws that are collectively referred to in the Code Bill as under Title IX. Your board policies that detail this are 3420, 21, 7550, and 51. They boil down to these points. We prohibit all forms of sexual misconduct, gender discrimination, sex-gender discrimination and retaliation, Title IX and the Sex Discrimination Policy 3421, and the procedures comply with all of the federal mandates and procedures and state law regarding the same. Our policy and procedures apply to all employees and students. Really important to point out, our Code of Conduct applies to employees and students. Our employees are all required to be trained in Title IX and report any possible violations. And we do have those trainings in place. They're received annually by our staff members. Prevention and education program has to be provided to students as well. Those are also planned for, and we actually have expanded upon those going into this year, working with our partners from Bavona, experiences for our students and updates to our procedures. All the information related to Title IX compliance can be found under domain 24, but basically bcst.org. If you take a look there, you'll find all this information as well. The point that we are making also, and we can't reiterate this enough, this is not new, but we want to make sure it's very clear to people that we take sexual misconduct and sex discrimination seriously. And this essentially is a description of that admission statement that is included in the code now with this adoption. Sexual misconduct includes, but is not limited to, the following unacceptable behaviors: rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment, gender discrimination, gender identity discrimination, stalking, relationship violence, and attempts to commit such acts. The district will not permit a hostile environment to exist and will not tolerate retaliation against any person who reports and or cooperates with an investigation. A person accused of violating this policy may be subject to disciplinary action. Upon receiving a report of alleged sex discrimination and/or sexual misconduct, the district will provide a prompt, equitable, reliable, and impartial investigation. I do want to point out, this is with regards to behaviors in the school environment, related to the school environment, or when a substantial disruption is caused in the school environment. However, sometimes there's confusion among students, staff members, or community members around the district's role in these situations. When an incident occurs outside of the school environment, we work directly with families and the appropriate authority to provide both resources but follow-up investigation and accountability for such behaviors. So when we learn of an act, in other words, we work closely with the police department, we are not an investigative authority. When it does happen related to a school event or in the school environment, we do vigorously follow up on every single allegation, every single incident, anytime there's an issue regarding this. But there are times when people assume that if something happens at a party on Saturday night that we hear about, that there should be a consequence in school. That's not always the case because we don't always have the authority to do that for something outside of school. I hedge the bet a little bit to say that when it does impact the school environment and it causes what is considered a substantial disruption to the school environment. So in other words, the behavior, the allegation results in a variety of conversations or other behaviors that happen in school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or on social media that are affecting kids in school, that's when it becomes a school issue. Differently than us being a support agency, then we are also an investigative agency and we take a different role in that regard. Just want to make sure I'm clear in that. What this change in the code and this summary does indicate in terms of actions, we'll take immediate and appropriate action to stop any misconduct, prevent its recurrence, and remedy the effects of that misconduct. Where appropriate and in consultation with complainants, we will contact local agencies such as Bavona, Restore Willow, and/or the Brighton Police Department for additional resources and supports. That has been our practice. This makes it very clear now in our Code of Conduct that this is what happens as well. Treat all persons, complainants, and respondents with respect to dignity and fairness. Consider the complainant's wishes with respect to supportive measures, interventions, and resolutions in regard to alleged sexual discrimination and/or sexual misconduct. Very important to focus on that for one second because we have a responsibility also to the alleged victim to honor their wishes in any given situation. So there are many circumstances where things are revealed in the confidentiality of a counseling session, for example, where you're working directly with a child and eventually with their parents, and they wish to approach the police department or an outside agency at their own speed, in their own way, and we have an obligation to honor that as well. Explain to the complaint in the process for filing a formal complaint. Requests for confidential use of anonymous reporting may limit how the district is able to respond to a report of sexual harassment, misconduct. Follow all appropriate procedures as detailed in Title IX materials, the student Code of Conduct, the district's Code of Conduct, Human Resources Manual, or other related institutional policies, state federal mandates, and legal standards. And finally, encourage and support a report to local law enforcement for any criminal act and cooperate with any criminal investigation prosecution. Does the board have any questions on this update to the Code of Conduct? Okay, thank you. Who will be on the agenda then for adoption at the September meeting? And we'll move ahead with making the change. Again, any questions or comments can be forwarded to Kim as well. I don't mean that for the board, of course, you can let me know, but any community members that would like to formally provide feedback are welcome to do so in between now and the next meeting or during public comment, perhaps even at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As noted, that was a review. It will be brought back up at the September 14th School Board meeting. Our next item is approve the agenda, but we will be making an amendment to the current agenda. Current number nine, which is approval of the updated reserve plan, we're going to remove that item. It's contained within current item number 10, which is approval of the 2021-2022 tax levying rate. So we're eliminating current number nine. With that change, move to the agenda for approval? I'm going to say moved by Karen and seconded by Andrea. Thank you. Next item is public participation. Are there any members? No, that's okay. The next item is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to offer any comments? See no one wanting to participate. We will move forward to the approval of the minutes from the July 1st, 2021 reorg meeting. Do I ask for any edits first? Motion to approve the minutes from the July 1st, 2021 meeting.
Still moved.
Moved by Christina?
Second.
Second by Andrea. Any edits or comments to those minutes?
I do have a question for Kim. In shooting a serious statement, you wrote that public land shall be sold. She was concerned about public land being sold into public hands. And did she mean private?
I don't know if I pulled it from Dan's, he was a note, oh, I don't.
Yes.
Yes.
You made that change.
Yes, I can make that change.
Good catch, thank you. Anything else with regards to the minutes? Do we do another? Okay. So with that change, as suggested by Julene, I'll again ask approval of the minutes? So? All in favor, yeah. Opposed? Six in favor. Thank you for that. Next up, very exciting, the approval of the 2021-2022 Brighton Blueprint Plan. As many in the community know, because we have input from teachers, from parents, from the board, from so many people, the blueprint is what sets our priorities for each and every year. It's updated annually. And by updated, meaning we make edits, changes, comments based on what's appropriate, and then we receive updates on it quarterly as we go through the year. So very excited based on some blueprint discussions we had last week. We have Kevin give an update to the community with regards to our blueprint.
Thank you very much. And as you said, it's updated regularly, hence the name Blueprint. It's an iterative document. It's something that shifts over time. No different than when you have a blueprint for capital improvement on your home or at school, when you put a hammer in the wall and you see a pipe is in a different place, you have to make changes to that blueprint. And we adjust this regularly based on changing conditions, based on the updates that we need to make to be a dynamic organization. And the process for that, quick overview, is to begin by gathering feedback. This year, the form of that was asking around pandemic recovery specifically to our community, what is it that we should be doing? And we asked in two different ways, which I'll explain to you in a second. And then to get together with a group of people to do stakeholder planning, which we did in June, we had the Blueprint Day, which involves community members, staff members, our leadership team, and the Board of Education, to really come together and dig into the whats. What are the strategies we ought to be thinking about to meet our objectives? And then to develop action plans. And we worked on that last week in our retreat with all of you and the leadership team, really digging into, okay, those are great ideas. How do we make that happen? What does that actually look like? What is the what? What is the when? What is the how? Is that going to happen? Today, we're at the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, which is the board's adoption then of the plan. It's described and summarized in this presentation. It will then be published, implemented, and sent out to our stakeholders, presented in a variety of formats. And then the real work begins, and you receive ongoing updates, and we do progress monitoring throughout the year. But it becomes the backbone of our work. It's the thread that runs through everything. We often say, well, where is it in the blueprint? It is our guiding document, not one that sits in a binder looking great on a shelf, but rather the kind of drive behind all of our committee work. And I'll dig into that a little bit further with you as well. Again, that's where we're at today. The background to this in terms of the blueprint planning, again, is that temperature check idea, which over time, in different years, we've gone out and asked, how are we doing in a more general sense? We've been very focused the last two years on asking a different type of question. Last year, the one, the data for this plan based on pandemic, the year before, based on pandemic, it was really about reopening and what was that going to look like going into the 2021 year, and diversity, equity, inclusion. Us feeling like at that moment last year, those were the two primary aspects of our work. Not that we've moved away from that. That still is really key to what we are doing. But there's a desire this year to also go back to pre-2021 levels of saying, but we have lots of priorities. And the organization needs to keep moving forward, needs to continue to be dynamic and think about that work. Those two threads, though, run through everything that we're doing. So instead of them being silos and standalone items, occasions or events essentially, they should be the backbone of our work in every area. And as you see, they really are in that place. I mentioned we have that Blueprint Team Day. Everybody gets together. Then we do action planning. And that notion of accountability, consistency, and focus is really important. That this becomes the thread that runs through all of our work. In 1920, our priority areas, after we have had at different times, seven areas, six areas, they condensed, really took three broad umbrella. Back to saying, listen, those are threads that run through all of our work, but our priority areas that we really need to be thinking about expansively to continue to move forward in all areas, our systems, academic rigor, mental health, and all this. The frames, the data frames that were considered by the Blueprint Team, so the team being that stakeholder group that came together to plan in June, pandemic feedback from the exchanges, I'll show you in one second, qualitative data from presentations. So those are presentations given by all of our directors, administrators, the principals, and what's happening in each program and building. Those were five-minute event presentations essentially given to that stakeholder group for them to consider as a level set and kind of where things are at in the district. And then the lived experiences and perspectives of the people that are at the table, who came from all different walks of life and parts of the district. The two exchanges that we put out, one was to families, the other two staff basically saying, how can the district support students and families as we target funding the pandemic recovery where your suggestions saw its comments on the best investments you can make with limited federal funding to respond to COVID needs? And then we said to the group, the large group, that there were two essential questions, two lenses that we would like them to think about. One, how does the work that you're talking about, how do the strategies further our commitment to including all, ensuring and promoting equitable access for all students and families, and honoring diversity among all members of our school community? And then the second, have we considered the need for pandemic recovery specifically addressed, identified needs, and suggestions offered? So getting back to what feedback people were giving us in the thought exchanges. They were given directions, basically asked to review the 1920 objective for every one of those priority areas, the three umbrella areas, and then to discuss strategies that would meet that objective, the whats, and answer the statement, if our objective is this, then we should do this. These are the activities. And asked them to, again, review their priority areas with those two important lens, diversity, equity, inclusion, and pandemic recovery. We did action planning last week. We took the Blueprint Day work, reviewed those plans, research was done ahead of time. How could this work? What should we do differently? What meets the grant requirements for the federal pandemic money? And looked at all possibilities. We met and to review all of those plans and discuss them, made revisions to the whats, those specific strategies that were offered, and then developed more fully plans that identified who, when, and how. And that was resulting in the action plans that we're going to talk to you about today. So these are organized in three chunks. I'm going to summarize, so I'm not reading everything at you. But essentially, the first area, academic rigor for all students, boils down to us saying that each and every learner in our district should be exposed to academically rigorous courses. We need to go above and beyond to identify the giftedness, the excellence, and the talent in each and every child, and then provide for them coursework that challenges them in the way that's most appropriate for them. This is a key component also around our diversity and equity strategies to make sure that all children are exposed and that we have equitable representation of all groups in that type of course. Key component of our work, knowing that this better prepares children when they leave us if they've had that opportunity. So what will we do to accomplish that objective? Make sure we establish a clear understanding, first and foremost, of culture, responsive education, what it looks like in our classrooms, and consider a teacher tool in measuring our growth in that area. We'll provide tools for supporting courageous conversations that we have with our colleagues, with other families. We need to help people and give them the right tools to have the most difficult, challenging conversations that also, by the way, create the most growth. We would like to grow the habits of mind model beyond really K2, and it has certainly leaped into 3.5, but that's been a powerful component of the work, K2, in helping kids think about their thinking and be able to reflect on their own cognition. We would like to expand that beyond second grade, thinking that's a very valuable tool. We would like to continue the learning and support for teachers to differentiate in the classroom. Now more than ever, it's important to meet kids where they are. They're all coming back from the pandemic in a different place, and we need to make sure we're providing support for that individual approach for teachers to be able to promote that. School-based opportunities need to be developed as well to connect with families, to talk about culture responsive education and what it looks like in our classrooms. So in other words, we need to be educating our community as well, helping them understand the really valuable work that's being done in that area. Just as a side note, I would encourage people, we have great resources on our website currently right now under diversity, equity, inclusion. The curriculum work that is posted there, the actual teaching, really gives a great perspective on exactly what is happening. Forget about whatever might be read in other places or what's in the media in other spaces. What's happening at Brighton is on our website, is very, very clear, leaves no mystery, and we think presents very well some good authentic work that our kids are engaged in. We'd also, under Back Down Period for All Students, like to offer opportunities to share work, again, around culture responsive education. So those parent opportunities, curriculum nights, et cetera. Review the ongoing working needs for each school building in culture responsive education. Align context texts and resources that are used at every grade level relative to culture responsive education. We'd like to develop more tutoring support for students outside of school day hours and have a plan to be able to do that. Again, this is that individualized approach based on pandemic recovery. And access to interventionists at the secondary level, and we have funding relative to pandemic to do that. That's something different than you typically would see operating, but a very individualized approach again for kids. And consider additional opportunities for tutoring, such as connecting high school students with elementary students, after-school help rooms for students in different content areas as well. Something that we used to have, that we haven't had as much of over time, particularly the implementation of the flex period. Now recognizing that there's a need to do more of that and provide more of those opportunities for kids after school. In the area of mental health and wellness, we'd like to, in terms of an objective, continue to create learning environments that foster student health and wellness, supporting the whole child, both emotionally and physically. The mental health, wellness, and dignity of all students, staff, and communities integral to support each child each day in each way. This is a thread that runs through all of our work. Our objectives will be met by continuing implementation and training on restorative practices, particularly related to the community building aspect of restorative practices. We will provide restorative practice training for new staff during our staff induction. All staff will be, and either has been or will be, trained. We've been doing this K12 now for a couple of years, but with the induction of new staff, we're making sure that that happens on the front end. We'll develop better communication with families in the mental health area. So we have resources available. The question is, how do you get that to people and make sure you're communicating that clearly, that these are the resources that are available to you? Provide formal restorative discipline training for combination of mental health staff and administrators. So this is taking restorative practices and applying them not just to the community building aspect, which is the foundation, that's what comes first, but to the actual then administration of disciplinary consequences, working through situations in a way to restore relationships. Is a little bit different, but it's built on that foundation of community building at the outset. Continue to provide implicit bias training to all staff, not a outstaff, but all staff. Probably spread. Tyco, provide embedded professional development to define and develop a better understanding of social, emotional learning. We'd like to revitalize our new family event. We kind of have a chance to reimagine that after not being able to get together. We did it virtually last year and went as well as it could. We did it virtually last year, went as well as it could virtually. But we'd like to think about ways of welcoming new families into the district. And that's been an important landmark event for many of our families. We'd like to think differently about that also. Explore continued Zoom opportunities to support include parent participation at district events. As much as people do not want to be on Zoom, as much as they certainly were, we have learned about ways that this could really be helpful for families as well, given their schedules and demands and continued concerns about the Delta variant and the spread of COVID-19. We'd like to think about ways we can maximize use of that technology. We'd like to revise and administer a student engagement survey again and think more about the development of a parent university. We're providing opportunities to support parents as they continue to think about how they meet the demands and challenges of being a parent in 2021, in 2021, and beyond. Finally, our third area, we're around systems. And our objective in this area really boiled down to thoughtful planning fidelity to carefully plan systems. It allows us to meet our objectives if we're intentional about our work in these areas. Diversity, equity, inclusion, health, and well-being of faculty, staff, and students, and innovation to develop alternative learning environments, the physical spaces that our kids are in. So to accomplish our objective, we will go back to the start time conversation, reaffirming the logistical parameters. For example, things like not having K through five children picked up before 7:00 AM was a logistical consideration that we looked at before. But we want to reaffirm those and make sure we're still operating under those same principles. And the other non-negotiables required to begin second inter schools later than the current bell time. We'd like to reevaluate the 1617 start time study, reconvene that committee, and review the previous recommendations as well. Under hiring practices, establish a charter for the diversity, equity, inclusion hiring practices committee that focuses on environment and retention. We need to continue to bring more diverse candidates to the table. And we've made progress in that area. But we recognize an important component of having a staff that looks more like the students and families that we work with. And diversifying what we're providing to our children, really enriching by having a deeper fabric, is the retention aspect, the environment that we're providing. Making sure that it is a place that all candidates want to work, want to be a part of, and want to stay. And we recognize that they need to be proactive in that. So we'll develop resources and partnerships to meet those objectives as well. And under hiring practices, continue to foster and develop affinity groups to proactively support staff, be part of the environment aspect of this, teachers, faculty, and staff of color. And under physical environment, we are going to conduct an internal audit of play spaces, labs, makerspace areas to assess opportunities for diversity, equity, inclusion as well. Are these places really that are accessible to everybody? Or is there more we can do in our physical environment to be equitable and provide access to everyone? The next steps after your adoption would be to create the user-friendly documents and summaries to send out to folks, introduce these materials at our beginning of your meetings, both our welcome back, but our faculty meetings where essentially it is said to the faculty, okay, you've received all of this. Now this is what it means for you in your work, really making this a living, breathing document. Then our committees are charged with clear objectives for the year. Receiving actually a document that says the blueprint adopted this. Now this is what we'd like you to work on for the course of the year. Here are your objectives. We create a report schedule, and that's for the board being a topic calendar that shows you when you're going to receive reports on these action plans, on the specific projects that are being undertaken. We provide those reports regularly also to our staff and to community groups, community leaders, for example. TTS A receives those reports. We're often, again, talking about this work and holding ourselves accountable in that way. We consider budget implications as we get towards the springtime. Any recommendations that are coming from blueprint committees, from all of our committees, are in the context of then what can we afford, what can we need to be thinking about funding differently? We evaluate our plans towards the end of the year as well and report those out to you. How well did we do? What did we get done? What still needs to be done? And that impacts the process as it starts again next June, as we gather feedback from the community. We'd expect next June to go back to the broad question in our community, how are we doing? What else should we be thinking about? And be able to continue to build back in terms of the depth of our plan and our efforts as well. Hopefully, 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 all of us as a community emerging from the pandemic much more vibrantly in the springtime, certainly as we consider where we are right now and where we definitely could be as a community and as a region. Questions for me from the board about the blueprint?
I'll make just a couple of quick comments. One, in our blueprint review session last week, I think we just had a great day. A lot of great feedback, a lot of what I would call productive conflict, point, different points of view, people sharing and not always agreeing, and then trying to get to a spot. There's an old expression in corporate culture, which is a mile wide and inch deep, which is trying to take on a bunch of things a little bit. The purpose of the blueprint is to say, here's the things we've got to focus on. We're going to try not to be distracted by other things, other things come up that have to be dealt with certainly. But sometimes when we get feedback from the community wanting to know why are we working on this versus that, the blueprint should answer most of those questions. It's not a perfect document. As we've said repeatedly, we look at it every year to see where it needs to be updated. And we get updates on it quarterly and sometimes more often than that, Kevin, as you pointed out. So, you know, for the community, whether that's teachers, students, people without kids in school, this is why we're doing what we're doing and what we're choosing to focus on based on the environment we're trying to create for our students. So it's a great document, there's a lot of depth to it, but we're always welcoming feedback. It doesn't have to be the summer. If you see something during the year, provide that feedback and we'll see what we can do with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will, at this point, put forward for approval of the 2021, 2022 Brighton Blueprint Plan as just presented by Kevin.
Still moved?
Moved by Karen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Esther. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much. Next, we have Dr. Allison Rio to discuss the professional development plan. Welcome, Allison.
Hello, thank you. So just going to give a brief overview of our professional development plan for the district. And this is a plan that's developed for a three-year cycle. So we're in the middle of a cycle right now. So some of these things will look very familiar to what you've seen in the past. And some of the visuals will show some of the continued work we've done here within our Brighton community. So our vision for professional learning is developed through the work with the policy board and the Brighton Teacher Center. And at the heart of it all is looking at student achievement. So, you know, all of our professional learning that happens throughout the district is in results of supporting our students and, you know, our teachers, obviously, in the work that they do, but in the end, our students. So some of the pieces that, you know, you'll see throughout the plan are around student characteristics, helping teachers develop their content knowledge, and really improving their instructional ability across the board, whether it's working with different groups of students, the content they're learning, their pedagogy, collaborating with others, but that vision kind of shines through everything that we do. And this might look familiar, but this is, as Maria and the Teacher Center has identified as the Swoop. And we've used this for several years now, but really is a great visual that shows how theory of change and theory of action come together. So the work that we do in our professional learning impacts student achievement in the end, but there's lots of variables along the way. So from giving teachers and educators resources and supports through professional development in hopes that when we give them the supports, they're able to change their skills and practice and their knowledge and apply that to their teaching, which in the end results in positive increase for student achievement. So different pieces of professional learning, they fit into these different pockets. Sometimes we have learning that just offers resources to teachers to change something in their classroom. Sometimes we're having teachers and staff members look at things a bit differently in hopes to change their practice, which in turn impacts student achievement. So it doesn't always go up the stairs as it does in this image. Sometimes we start in the middle, sometimes, you know, we're at the beginning, but it's always purposeful in our design. And all of our professional learning is based on the standards for professional learning put forth by Learning Forward. And you can see what they are here, but really looking at learning communities, leadership of who are the right people to lead the professional development, whether it's in-house, somebody who works in the district, could be a teacher, could be a, you know, Maria or an administrator, and then what is the right implementation model for that professional learning? So I'll talk about that in a moment, but there's lots of different ways to review that and where are our resources coming from, our learning designs, our data we're using, and then obviously in the end, the outcomes. So we have really a few different models of professional learning here in the district. And we are looking at district-wide professional development, which looks like our district professional days. That typically happen in the summer. Superintendent Conference Days, where the whole district hears the same message around something. And then through our induction plan and our TA mentoring program, which are district-wide. And then site-based is more like school professional development. So that might hone into more of the specific needs of each school building. Those differ based on the teachers and the students that go there. So through faculty meetings or committee work, team leaders, and even just smaller professional development groups that meet together to look at a particular, something they want to learn more about. And then lastly, job embedded professional development, which could be through coaching. That's a big way that we look at that through the work that we do with teachers, teachers working with other teachers to help them hone their practice and learn something new in that way. For teachers and staff, as you know, but I just wanted to share again, there's lots of different ways for them to access professional learning. We have catalogs of activities available on frontline for teachers and all staff members that they can access in district, BOCs, out of district. And if they see something they want to learn more about that is not offered within our district, we have tools for them to put in a request form and ask to attend that professional learning experience. Or even if there's something that they want to create themselves, or, you know, a group of teachers want to come together to learn more about X, then we have the opportunity for them to be able to do that. Lots of different topics for professional learning for teachers. These are just a few that are mentioned in the plan. There, I probably could name 15 or 20 more, but it just depends, you know, on what people are in need of. And a lot of our practice right now looks at culturally responsive education in lots of different ways. And many of these things listed here fall under that umbrella. But also just specific content needs sometimes, or something that a teacher is looking to learn more about because it's part of a program that they work within, within our district. And lots of different opportunities. And if, again, if they're not over here, we have the tools to get teachers what they need. So this is just a brief overview for everyone. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the board? Just a brief moment to formally recognize and welcome Allison into her new role.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker did such a wonderful job over the past, I don't even know how long, being a champion for students and curriculum and learning, and particularly inclusive learning. And Allison has just jumped right into the role and taken off from where Debbie is. And Andrea and I had the chance to work with her on the math curriculum review. Was that last week or two weeks ago? Two weeks ago? Lose time during the pandemic. But, and just did a fabulous job at that event. So welcome, and we're going to continue to expect great things.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll put forward the approval of the professional development plan. Moved for approval, rather. Moved by, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, by Julaine.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Esther. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, as noted during the agenda approval, we are now on to new item number nine, which is approval of the 2021, 2022 tax rate. And Lou Alima will be presenting that. Just a couple of quick comments with regards to the tax levy rate. I think most people know that every year when we do pass the tax rate, it's an estimate based on what we think is going to happen. To be sure it's conservative, to allow for a little bit of cushion in case we see something unexpected. And I will tell you that the attitude of this board and this community is always, we only tax what we need, and not a penny more. We continue to expect and hope for the restorer of the foundation aid. And we'll probably touch on that a little bit over a multi-year period as committed to. But there's two options that Lou's going to present, that he's put together, or worked through that, rather, and then we'll be voting on that at the end, the one we think is the better alternative for our community.
Thank you. Good morning again. As Mr. Davis said, the budget is considered, the board ultimately adopts a spending plan that's approved by the community. That absolutely has to consider what the tax levy implications would be as it relates to the property tax gap. So the board adopted a spending plan with a tax levy of $57.13 million. That was a 2.5% increase. Throughout the course of the year, the Board of Education receives fund balance projections and updates. And in June, they approved the reserve fund plan document, considers disposition of year-end fund balance. Well, we've closed the books, we presented the numbers to the auditors, and the memo of August 4th outlines where that money has been allocated. And it presents an opportunity to reflect on the budget development process and the increase in foundation aid that we received, our ability to reduce our reliance on reserve funds that were historically budgeted for to offset the local tax levy. And again, it presents the opportunity then to appropriate more money this year to lower the taxes going into the 2122 school year. So the memo outlines the computation of the, of the tax rates. The Board of Education is only responsible for the tax levy. The taxable assessments and the equalization rates, that's all in the, that's all administered by the Towns and New York State Office of Real Property Tax Service. What the board controls is the amount that is levied and it controls the amount that's appropriated to balance that levy into the prospective year. So showing the disposition of fund balance, we were able to meet the board's objectives with the reserve fund plan document. And there is an opportunity to appropriate an additional $400,000 to the, to the tax levy, which would lower the rate, or, excuse me, lower the levy percentage from 2.85%, which was the tax cap calculation, to 2.13%, which is below, which is below that, which is below that threshold. So that's what's outlined in the memo for the board's discussion and consideration. I think long-term financial planning, the $400,000 would be a reasonable appropriation. It's something with the promise of increased foundation aid going forward that we can certainly manage and that we can move back to reoccurring revenues matching reoccurring expenditures. Any questions on, on that? So with that, I, in the memo, I left the resolution blank, but I am recommending through the superintendent levying the, the option of the $400,000, which would be a $56,000,729,971 tax levy for the 2122 school year, which is a 2.13% increase. And that would increase our appropriated fund balance from $2.6 million that was budgeted to $3 million going into the 2122 school year. And the tax warrant would reflect approval of that resolution.
I think just by way of summary, it's important to hit on these points that both of you have already made. We only propose to you taxing what we absolutely need to tax. There's no need or desire to tax beyond that, very careful about that, recognizing our obligation and duty to protect the community's resources and understanding the impact that has on each individual household. When you adopt a budget to present to the community and then the community votes on, that is a spending plan. There is, of course, the implication of how much does it cost and where, where do those resources come from? And we spent a lot of time actually talking about the resource to support the spending plan. But it is ultimately a spending plan with a possible tax increase. Now that dynamic has changed over time because of the tax cap and more certainty in the number than there was, say, 15 years ago, for example. And that the budget, because it involves a tax cap now, has a different interplay with the resources available to support the spending plan. But ultimately, you still don't set the levy or how much you're going to collect from the community until August of every year, based on the assessments and the property values. In other words, what's the value of the total pizza that you're splitting up between everybody to pay for? And so now, when you're adopting that in August, you have the chance to reevaluate how much you have to ask the community for. Nine times out of 10, it's almost exactly what in the springtime we said, this is what we need in order to support the plan, based on what we know is going to come from the state, et cetera. We're living in a more unpredictable time, clearly, and saw this as a great opportunity to be able to lower that amount that we're asking for from the community in the spirit of we don't ever ask for more than what we need to fulfill our obligations. And so I think Lou's presented a really great option for reducing the amount that we're asking for from the community while protecting our long-term health financially. So where we have an opportunity to do that, we will, we've committed to that, we'll continue to do that. Foundation aid was better than expected, our financials at the end of the year were better than expected. We feel really good about the ability to do this now. And would say to people, we evaluate that every year, and there's years we need to be right at the tax gap, and there's other years where we don't have to be. And without jeopardizing future financial implications, that's where we're at this year. It's a really good thing.
I'll make one additional comment. Karen and I have the chance to sit on the audit committee. And the work of Dahlia Watts and Lou and that finance team has been exceptional to have the taxpayers of Brighton over these past years. Continue to receive low interest rates for the work we do in construction. We have excellent bond rating. And from a fiscal standpoint, this school district is in as good a shape as it has ever been. I greatly appreciate Lou, Dahlia, and that team. And we get to see it on a I greatly appreciate Lou, Dahlia, and that team, and we get to see it on a quarterly audit committee all the time with independent auditors to take a look at everything that's going on, so appreciate the efforts of that team there. So I think I move forward for the approval. Do I state the rate in what I'm looking for?
Yes, the 2.13.
So what we're going to do is put forward an approval for the tax levy at the 2.13% that you heard Lou reference as opposed to the 2.85%. So we'll put that forward for approval.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Karen. Any other additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Continue to state as we do with all these things, anybody who has questions or comments are welcome to submit them to Lou or through Kim, to anybody, and we'll get those questions answered. I remark, always used to say this, and I forgot to say this at the top of the meeting, all the documents that we've looked at are available on the website at any time for people to reference at their own discretion. All right, we'll move on now with my glasses. See the consent agenda. Do I do these individually, Eric? Do I do?
No.
No, just the consent agenda.
The whole thing, A through E.
And then read, we read the gifts.
A through D, and then we read the gifts. So we'll read through the, move forward for approval of what is currently agenda, item 10, the consent agenda, A through E, and we'll go back and read through the gifts, but we'll push that forward for approval, please. Moved by Julene?
Seconded.
Seconded by Christina. I'm going to take a moment and read the gifts because it's always fantastic to see what we're doing with the resources we receive. First, A, gifting the amount of $3,933 from the Brighton Education Fund to purchase computers for the new VHS, TCMS esports team, training room, and central office.
How cool is that?
All right, it's 2021, we have an esports team, I think it's kind of cool. B, gifting the amount of $1,525 from the Brighton Education Fund, the French Road Health and Physical Education teacher, Janice Mix, for two different sets of microphones and speakers. C, gifting the amount of $200 for the annual Dee Bradley Smith Art Purchase Awards for graduating Brighton art students. And D, gifting the amount of $300 from Jamie, I'm going to try this, Weagle, to the Brighton Central School District to be used for PTSA hardship in all buildings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's passed. Anything else from the board before I push this forward for adjournment? Motion, sorry?
To adjourn to executive session.
I'm sorry, to adjourn to executive session, thank you. Motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Julene. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.